A little luck, we'll be streaming. Just let you know that your voice could be picked up by the microphones, so I think we're good. We're good, Betsy? Okay. I will call the regular Board of Selectmen meeting for February 20th, 2025, to order at 7:03 PM. Can we have the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First up, we have a presentation. My understanding, Chuck, would you like to come up and address the board on that? Got the green button on?
Yeah, I do. Can you hear me all right? All right, good. So last time I was here, I talked about Sustainable CT as the president of Sustainable Southbury. Today, I'm here in a different volunteer role. I also had the Energy Task Force in town. I chair the task force. We had planned to talk to you about some solar analysis we've been doing for a potential solar farm at the transfer station. We've had an 11-hour development come up, and, you know, we're not prepared to talk about that now. It could potentially mean a lot more revenue to the town than what we were going to recommend, and we owe it to our taxpayers to do our due diligence. So the Energy Task Force is asking to withdraw this presentation for tonight.
Okay, so we'll withdraw that for tonight, and we'll look forward to hearing from you as soon as you're ready. Get it before the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck. Thanks for all you do. Next up is public comment. We limit public comment to two minutes. If you'd like to make a public comment, please step up there and give us your name and where you live.
I'm Vivian Michaels. I live on 164 Burma Road. I'm here with a few of my neighbors because we're very concerned about the amount of traffic. Can you hear me? Is it coming out?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. The amount of traffic and the speeding on our road. As everybody, well, I think many people are well aware, it's used as a shortcut for people wanting to avoid traffic lights on 67, and they fly down our road. So we met together and we come up with different ideas of what could help us, but really, I think tonight, I want to impress on how important it is and how anxious we are that there could be some tragedies happening. We're lucky so far that it hasn't. For example, this summer, where my driveway is, it's right around the curb, and you can't see, it's a blind driveway. In fact, that's one of the things I'm going to ask for, is a sign that says "blind driveway." I'm always nervous pulling out of that driveway. I look both ways. This summer, I looked both ways. I pulled out, and as soon as I pulled out, another car came zooming. They come in from 67 side, zoomed right by me. I was going to take a right towards 188. They zoomed by me, and it's a narrow road. And they were in the other lane in order to pass me on that road. And thank God, there was no one coming from 188. There would have been a fatal if I really think so. I sat in the car just shaking, and I said, "Well, we've got to do something about this road." The other example is, this summer, a car failed to negotiate the curb and flew across the road to my neighbor directly across the street from me, who is not present here tonight. Flew it right across, smashed into both stone walls on the sides of this driveway, and ended up crashed into their side yard. And it's just two examples, and I'm sure other people will have some examples of it. So we are very worried about our road, and we would like something done.
Thank you.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Thank you for hearing us.
Is there any other public comment? Feel free to step up.
Hi, my name is Dorothy Schnorz Nally. I live at some of my Quaker Farms Road. And I was asked by the neighbors of Burma Road to come and speak, because they all know that I like to take my horse and carriage out quite frequently up on 181.
Sorry about that. On 188, and because Mr. Bertram made sure I couldn't go down Jeremy Swamp Road Extension anymore, I came up, come up Burma Road. And I've experienced a great deal of traffic, not only beeping at me, flying by me, going very quickly, but also they, I have a buggy whip that I hold out to the side. They're supposed to give me 12 feet. Several of them have run into that buggy whip. And yeah, no, I haven't done any damage to any vehicle. I would never want to hurt anybody, but it just kind of wakes them up, and, you know, people say, "Well, don't go down there anymore." In fact, one of the neighbors says, "You're going to get killed." And I thought, "Well, I have just as much right as everyone else, and people should really slow down." I have to admit, my son is one of the ones who flies down there all the time, and it'd be a shame if he ran into my horse and myself one day. But anyway, so look into this, please, and may God bless all of you.
Is there any other public? Feel free.
I'm Barbara Hampton. I also live on Burma Road. Do I need to push this button?
Is it green?
Yes. Across from the poor gentleman whose walls were knocked down, and next to Viv, who's in danger of getting creamed when she pulls out of her driveway. And I have a little bit better sight where I am. I actually go out to my mailbox. Went out to my mailbox, and I still have good hearing, even though I'm officially a septuagenarian now. And I hear a car "roar" coming up from the south, and I thought, "Rrrr" coming the other way. And I said, "Huh, I guess I'm not going to cross back right now." Well, what did they do? The guy coming up the hill crossed over into the oncoming lane with a car coming at him, and I thought, "Oh, so I'm going to get two-for-one now." Luckily, they didn't crash. I didn't get hurt. I've never been great at, you know, vaulting things in gymnasiums. I'm only five foot tall. And I'm looking at that guardrail, and I'm thinking, "Can I possibly get over that guardrail before they get here?" And it's not a unique experience, as you were hearing. Lots of us have had these close calls, and it's because of the speed that they're traveling at. If they were traveling at the speed limit that's posted, which I believe is 30, all of them would have had plenty of time to observe, to take the appropriate stuff that's in your driver's manual. When you take driver's ed, it tells you what you do when you have to pass somebody. So I don't know how to make those people smarter, except if they're afraid, maybe, of getting a ticket. And the thing that has come to my attention, and I'm sure many of you too, are these automated speed enforcement things, the speed cameras, because, number one, there's evidence. You get the license plate, you get the speed, it's recorded, they get the ticket, they have to pay a penalty, and it has the big advantage for all of Southbury. Because if you ask an officer to do that, that's got to be a terrible duty, an awful lot of just sitting there waiting, and then less than the friendliest conversations with the person who's just gotten tagged. So I think that makes it a much better way, a fairer way, because you don't happen to be the one person who's there when the police guy is there. The camera's there all the time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Gary Diamond, 128 Burma Road, Southbury. Okay. All right. I'm asking the town of Southbury to lower the speed limit on Burma Road to 25 miles an hour. It used to be 25. Then they raised it to 30. It's time to move it back, okay? And move the sign low to the ground so they could see it. Right now, it's like 11 feet up in the air. Nobody looks at it. Nobody also looks at the "no through traffic" sign, which is way up in the air. Nobody looks at it. Okay? A traffic study was done. It's so bad, we can't even clean our driveways without getting hit. Now, I understand there's a possibility of a new housing development being built on Burma Road, adding more cars coming out of blind driveways, asking the town to let that development not happen. We have enough traffic issues now. And I'm also asking, please, ask the state Department of Transportation to make both ends of Burma Road safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment?
Before I start, my comments are on the proposed solar that I picked off the town website. Now that they're changing it, you want me to read some of the comments in any way?
You have two minutes for public comment.
All right. Page one, "We think it's too costly to level the transfer station to slopes 15 degrees or less investigating options. When are you going to do it? What options exist?" "We say that it could satisfy all or more of the town's electrical use. It implies that we know the town's electrically used now. I'd like to see that documentation, because I did something on it a year or so ago." "Why would we pay $5,000 for initial cost of an array if it's owned by virology? What about footings, fencing, power transfer buildings, lines? What are the effective solar hours assumed for this site? It varies as a function of geography, latitude, and the climate in the area. What were the bidder's assumptions? Makes a big difference." Talks about 10% to 11% of the town's electric bills being paid over the years. Those panels degrade at 1% to 2% a year. So what were the bidder's assumptions? Flat line, 100% for 30 years? That would not be realistic. It doesn't say in here which way it is. I'm trying to just pick the hot ones before. I only have two minutes. It talks about state incentives in here, $3.8 million. Are they guaranteed, or are they assumed? That could be a big swinger if they're assumed and we don't get them. I have no idea whether they are guaranteed or not. The milestone chart, the first one is February 25th, electrical one-line diagrams to be completed. I'd like to see them. We're only a few days away from that. Initiating an impact study. None of this on the schedule shows who has the option item. The bidder, the town, or consultants that the town might hire? It really needs to be explained who's paying for those studies. I'm on page seven now. Complete diligence of land, complete the diligence, that's what it says, of land leveling options. Who does it? When's it going to be done?
I'm going to have to stop you at two minutes.
How close am I?
You're over.
What do you want me to do with the rest of the comments?
You can submit it to the Board of Selectmen.
Okay.
That's no problem. Just submit it electronically, and we'll get it out.
No, I just did this an hour before the meeting, so.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Is there any other public? Yeah, you're welcome. Two minutes. Doesn't work that way. Thank you.
Hi, John Sears, 58 Burma Road. Has anybody here ever driven over Burma Road? Well, then you know that it goes like this. And for anybody, any one of us to pull, I'm a little bit better. I could see pretty far down each way. But my daughters, once in a while, pull out, and you know, you got your heart in your mouth, and they come up, you know, 60 miles an hour, 88 feet a second. You can't get out of their way. And I don't know what you could propose to completely stop the people from doing this. You could put "no through traffic" on there, but they just look at it. They don't get stopped the first time or the second time. They just ignore it. The police presence lately has been pretty good, and I've seen a big drop in the people coming through. But just the other night, there was an officer sitting there in front of my place, and he's coming up to park, and there's three or four people right in back of him that are cutting through. So I don't know how you can enforce. I mean, you'd have to stop every one of them. Maybe these new traffic signs they got that takes a picture of the market plate, maybe that might help out. You can't really have a cop sitting there every, you know, the busy time is 7 o'clock in the morning and 5 o'clock, 6 o'clock at night. But I won't even allow my wife to go across. You can't. They put some stones on Burma Road, which made it a little bit better, because, you know, you could hear cars coming. But when it was smooth, I'd just stand there, get the mail, and turn around both ways to make sure there's nobody there, because you can't get out of their way. So I don't know what the answer is going to be. I'd hate to have it be made a one-way road, because it's kind of nice to be able to go on both sides of our road. Always has been. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dwyer.
John Dwyer, I live on 125 Quaker Farms Road, but I can see Burma Road from my house. My property actually abuts the terminal end, so much so that if someone's coming down that road when the road is slick, they end up in my front yard, and that's happened. I've had about 40 years of experience on that road since I've been living there. I can confirm and attest and tell as many stories as anyone here. It's one of the more treacherous sections of road in town. I have limited my use of that road significantly because I've recognized the hazards and the dangers of going that way. One of the big problems is you have people coming south on 67 at 50 miles an hour, straight lining onto Burma Road and barely decelerating until you get to the end. It's not that far. And when I'm in there trying to be considerate and follow the speed limit, boom, they're right up on my back, blowing their horns, and they're not very, they're not any more happy than I am. One considerate my consideration may be, excuse me, is changing the configuration of the northern entrance so that it's not a speedway anymore, that they have to make a, you know, a purposeful turn rather than just have open passageway. Thank you very much. Nice to see everyone. Good luck.
Thank you, John. Any other? Yes, ma'am. It's your public debut.
Hi, my name is Nancy Nagy, and I am also from Burma Road, 74 Burma Road. And I'm just here to back up the neighbors. It's true. Just to get to your mailbox, you take your life in your hands. And thankfully, there are some people that will stop and let you get back to your driveway. But I'm telling you, some of, it's not even just young kids. There's, you know, older people too. They just fly, you know, and I'm out there, "What are you doing?", you know? And a couple of times, I've seen them come from the north end and just miss the telephone, pull on our corner of our property, and I'm like, "Oh, my God." And I constantly say, you know, "We're going to see someone get really hurt on that road." You know, and I don't know, but I've heard recently that the speed limit has, was it 25 miles an hour at one time?
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Go ahead with your public.
It used to be 25 at one. I don't know why it went to 30. I was thinking, could we have a current traffic test done to see how many cars are traveling through our road? Get a speed limit on them? I know, I guess previously at one time, there was. But it's been a few years. But we had police presence this weekend, and let me tell you, it has made a difference, you know? Of course, they know that there's a police officer around every now and then. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if it's closing up one end, putting speed bumps, cameras taking pictures of people's license plates, but something needs to be done. So we're leaving that up to you.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Any other public comment?
The traffic study was done in 2021.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Yes, sir. I knew you came for a reason.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Clevis Pietri, 108 Burma Road. I'm here with some of my neighbors backing up them, but mostly for the safety of my family, of my kids. I got three young kids that every time they play in the front of the yard, I'm afraid. I'm afraid because a lot of those drivers, they go 55 and over. And I will please ask all single one of you to think about the safety of our kids. I would like to see my kids raising up on my family. And I know it's hard. I know it's a road that's going to be tough to make decisions, but I think speed bumps will help a lot, because we have seen police presence in the past couple of weeks. But we all know that that's not going to be there forever. And, but speed bumps, I think they can help. Narrowing the both ends of the entrance or the exit of Burma Road might help make less drivers fly like crazy entering through Burma, exiting. I think the side from 67 is the most dangerous one compared to the other end. I don't know if we can cut the edge, widen the edge on the road, make that entrance way more narrow so people don't just take a Y and swings right on the right. So please think about the safety of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? You'll pass. Wife and husband, husband and wife. Mr. Rogirio.
I'm here for other reasons, but I did have a comment about the solar project, as Don did, and I just wanted to say that I would like to compliment that a plan to place solar panels on the town transfer station makes imminent sense. Anytime solar can be implemented on a brown field or capped unused dump or a parking lot makes a lot of sense. It really does. No trees will be cut, so you're not messing up a carbon sink nor farmland lost. Again, this is a good thing. One comment about the plan, "It would be helpful for the public to understand why the last plan for solar panels on the old transfer station was unacceptable and why the new plans, whether leased or bought, is more advantageous than the prior plan, which did not move forward." Don's request for more detail on implementation is reasonable, and I would hope that his input is carefully considered. Thank you.
Any other public comment? You've already had two minutes.
Not a comment.
No, I'm. You can drop it off in the back, please. That'll be fine. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? That's the end of our public comment part of the agenda. Announcements and correspondence are in front of you. You have your reports. Do you have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. Have a second?
I second.
Made a second. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
And I don't believe anybody's opposed. Minutes of February 6th, 2025, regular meeting. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second on that? Made a second by Justin. Betty? Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Holly is abstaining. And it passes. We have no unfinished business. We'll move on to new business on the highway easement. You have the resolution in front of you? Can I have a second?
Second.
Made a second to approve the easement. Any discussion on that? Joe is here to explain if anybody, the nitty-gritty about that. It's been reviewed by town council and approved. Actually, wrote it. And this gives, takes the easement for the land trust. Joe, why don't you give it, explain? Just so the public understands why we're doing this.
No, absolutely. You know, for, you know, easements are not surrendered every day. I can understand why you.
I can assure you they're not.
Yeah, no, I get it. So to recap, last year, the land trust purchased a six-acre parcel at the end of Silver Beach Road. It's a cul-de-sac that this property bridges the Phillips and Love Doll Farm preserves, which were done more than 20 years ago. This was a loose end left over from that purchase that wasn't purchased.
Excuse me just a minute. Bonnie, can you close that door?
Sorry. So essentially, this was a six-acre piece in between those two farms. They barely touched, and it was, again, a leftover. At the time, Dudley Ashwood, the developer, refused to sell the parcel back 20 years ago, preferring to hold it back for a future building site. Fast forward to last year, and we finally bought it. And we received a deep OSWA grant in the amount of $122,000 to help preserve it. However, between an award and getting the check, there's a review process that DEEP does, and their surveyor has requested a few revisions to the required A2 survey, including that we dissolved this old Town of Southbury highway easement, which was originally, it's kind of at the top of that picture. It's kind of a crosshatched piece, and it went from where Silver Beach Road ended to land that was going to be developed by the Phillips family, who never was. So the easement was created in 1987, when, again, the assumption was there would be a big development where Phillips Farm is. Never happened. We preserved it, and we preserved this piece as well. So we're really cleaning this up, because the DEEP is very persnickety about A2 surveys, as well they should be, because they don't want to see something happen where a piece of land was preserved and they paid for it, and the right to build a road was there. So what we're asking you to do is to approve the abandonment of that easement, which is not going to get used anyway. I can promise you that. Attorney Tom Kaelin, town attorney, received and tweaked our termination agreement, and we were requesting you folks to do some action on that tonight to let us get this grant. So hopefully, we'll get a check once we abandon the easement. That's it in a nutshell. If you have any questions?
Just for the Board of Selectmen, that most any road we accept into our town road system comes to the Board for approval. There's a few out there. We don't know what happened, but we're working on that. Also, when we abandon a road or give up an easement, we have, the Board of Selectmen need to know and accept that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'll call the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. And I don't think there's anybody opposed. First, Selectmen's report. I apologize. I've been in court two days this week, sick one day and a holiday, so I'm catching up. Thank you to all the members of our community who joined us for the Southbury Public Library's ribbon-cutting ceremony on Friday, February 14th, at the library's new temporary location in the Heritage Village Hotel and Conference Center. Valentine's Day could not have been more suitable for, day for the event to tie into the library's heart of the community, and we love SPL themes at Southbury Public Library. Our library director and her team have done a phenomenal job throughout the library closing, providing the services to the community under difficult circumstances. I am incredibly pleased to have a temporary library space to welcome patrons until our library gets restored. It took a village, and I thank all the town employees and members of the public who made this location and grand opening come to fruition. It was nice to see many town employees who frankly have kind of bonded with the library people there. Yesterday, members of the Southbury Emergency Management, Planning, Public Works, and Selectmen's Office met with DEEP regarding the campground access at Kettle Town State Park. In addition, the rebuilding of the Bridle Trail and Crossing were briefly discussed and are currently being addressed within DEEP and DOT. Southbury Emergency Management Director Steve Chanel was asked to be a presenter for the 2025 Connecticut Emergency Management Symposium on April 1st, 2025, at Camp Net in Nyannick. Given how well Steve has been heading our emergency operations, I am not surprised he was chosen. When FEMA team leaders came to offer their assistance in town, I received compliments that they have never been, seen a town as prepared as ours. I am confident that Steve's experience, leadership skills, and execution style, execution style will enable us to overcome the recent challenges from the flood. It is worth noting that many Southbury's municipal leaders are being recognized on the state and regional levels. This recognition validates our accomplishments and highlights the level of experience and teamwork in my administration. In previous months, our finance team achieved a bond rating of AAA, the first time in our town's history. Our economic development director has chosen to lead a regional economic development organization, and our IT director earned the highest rating possible at their recent assessment. My goal is to continue to provide outstanding service and quality of life to our Southbury residents by attracting talented leaders to staff, to our staff, and developing experts in their respective. by attracting talented leaders to staff, to our staff and developing experts in their respective fields. Another note, we had an employee Super Bowl party. Betsy Rosa and Noreen Thompson of our Select, of my office organized and hosted our annual employee potluck during our lunch hour the week after the Super Bowl. All departments contributed something from homemade chili soup, homemade soups, chili, hot dogs, stews, salads, breads, desserts, and more. This annual event is always a great time and wonderful opportunity to share a hot homemade meal and socialize together. Thank you, Betsy and Noreen, and everyone who helped to make our employee Super Bowl a great success. That is a wonderful, I really enjoy that. It's very informal, and it is very well received. This is my Region fifteen online youth art exhibit. The National Council of Arts Education Youth Art Month is celebrated annually in March. The event highlights the creativity and talent of young artists, giving them a platform to display their work. The Region fifteen students in kindergarten through twelfth grade will be part of the Southbury Library's virtual art gallery. I encourage you to support these young, talented, young artists by visiting this online art exhibit on the Southbury Library website after March first. From there, we go to the report from liaison, Selectmen Armino.
Yes. So the meeting was postponed from last week to yesterday, the library board. They moved into the Heritage Inn, as you had mentioned. They gave us a tour of the space, and they've really done a lot with the spaces that they have. They have this. Oh, sorry. They have a circular, I have a big mouth, so you can hear me anyways. They have office space. They have a circulation area. They have a hold and borrow area. They bring out carts into the lobby, and they do a browsing area for the public. Heritage Inn is now adding seating areas to their main floor so people can grab a book or a magazine or a newspaper, and people can go all over the main floor of the Heritage Inn. They're also in the open areas are having programs for children and adults and all that. As you mentioned, they had a ribbon cutting. There was about fifty to sixty people there. The, some of the people that were coming into the library and, well, to get books and board members were questioning the timeline of the flood. Just they wanted some kind, something they can hand to people that they could just peruse and see where we are and where we're going with it. So I got together a timeline, and Steve Chanel helped me put it together. He actually created the PowerPoint, which you had started already. He added to it, and now it's, it's never, well, it won't be complete until the library's done, but it's going to be. But at least it's a continuing document. So Goshen's going to post it on the website. The library was very happy about it. I am going to make some copies that are laminated so they can hang them all over, and people can just peruse through it. And then we'll just keep that going.
The library will do the laminating, right? Or we will?
I'm going to do it.
Well, you should.
You have a laminating?
Yeah, come on in.
Okay, good. Okay. Because I already talked to Fred, but I'll just, okay. Friends of the library had given a report. They did a pop-up sale last week at Parks and Rec between nine and three, and there was a thousand dollars in sales, and that was just from puzzles and games. Their donations are steady, but they're slowing down quite a bit. So they're asking if anyone can donate books, puzzles, anything like that. Donations are Tuesday and Thursday at Kmart Plaza from nine-thirty to eleven-thirty, and Wednesday's from five to seven. They're also looking forward to having bigger sales so they can make more money. I do have to say, the staff is amazing. They have one team that goes to the library. They pull all the books. They do returns. And the other staff stays so they can handle the, the patrons coming in. They're really making it work, and all they were talking about is how thankful they are to you and the staff here for having the space and being able to continue there because they haven't lost one staff member because they were able to work here. Shirley Michaels, the chair, she gave her report. She was speaking about a U Penn study that said library magic is a real thing, and the girls can all see it. The, the staff members can see that it really is something that people can come now and touch the books. We discussed the budget and the strategic plan, and the tech committee gave some updates. Then I had a LEPC meeting, L E P C. Those are the fastest meetings in the whole entire world, I do have to say. Twelve minutes was long, and they got a lot covered in twelve minutes. So the fire marshal was there. The health department was there. Steve Chanel gave a report. He was talking about they're making a continuity of operation plan. They're getting together all the essential personnel, all the departments. They're going to have a complete employee list. The first draft will be coming out soon. They want to start, Steve is getting together a mass casualty drill that they hopefully will do this year. They're looking to the state for help on that. The health department is now doing Narcan and CPR classes on three-ten. If anyone's interested, they can contact the health department. Also, they're doing fall training, which now they're going to partner with Southbury Ambulance because there's a lot of people that do fall that they do on calls for. And the fire marshal is getting involved as well because he has steps to safety training. So they're all going to partner together and try to get something going. They're also going to do house calls for people to show them how to remove rugs and navigate safely in their homes.
I should probably be one of the calls.
I'm going to be probably there soon too, so we'll have a dual date or something like that. There is a new deputy fire marshal. They're doing more inspections, and Derek is gathering historic buildings documents and drawings so that can be online as well. So that was a great meeting, and all that in twelve minutes. Tells me, takes me longer to tell you. Then we had the EMS Commission Committee on, that was on Tuesday night. They're working on their annual report. There's some things they want to tweak. They should have their final report for the Selectmen in March. They're also revising their bylaws, so those will be, hopefully be completed by March or April. Southbury Ambulance did their reporting. Quite impressive for twenty twenty-four. Their total calls were four thousand one. And they were talking about two very wonderful saves, two CPR saves that they are going, the police and the EMS was a great team together, and both people survived. One was on twelve-twenty-eight, and one was on two-nine. And they're going to have an event to recognize those two CPR saves. EMS is, Southbury Ambulance is also publishing their quarterly notice and voices. They're promoting on social media, and they're having monthly dates for CPR and AED classes. So that's it. Thank you.
Selectmen Betty. Thank you. Selectmen O'Neal.
Let's see, the Community Relations Task Force met last night. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend, but hopefully we'll keep that going. It's a great group of people. They do have a round table coming up. Conservation Commission hasn't met since we last met. The Park and Rec Commission met on the thirteenth. The two important conversations that they had were the splash pad location. Looks like they're looking more toward Settlers Park near the playground. And also, there was a conversation on the Grange Hall. They're going to all get together, take a look at that, and see if they can identify a use for that building.
Okay. Selectmen Sullivan.
So the Board of Ed has met several times, and forgive me because I've been, this is, I just returned from traveling, and I was not here for three of their meetings. However, one was a special meeting reviewing current fees for facility use. Then they had a separate special meeting that was executive session. So they've had one regular meeting, and it, from what I understand, mind, Joe was not here, but based off of their documents, it seems that it was a pretty standard format, approving curriculum, and then they approved the, the use of the fees that they had discussed at their prior special meeting. So I'm going off the notes.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you very much.
Nice trip. Selectmen Van Stone.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman, through you. Reporting first on the Charter Revision Commission, which does not have the fastest meetings in the world, but we get, but we get a lot done. So we're continuing our process, chugging towards August. We're just about, we had John, Board of Finance Chairman John Michaels and Dan Colton in last night in our meeting, talking about some of the aspects of the charter that deal kind of around our finance department, and they gave us their insights of things that might make business a little more efficient and the processes that go along with those. So we took those seriously. And we are now in the, beginning the process of kind of coalescing around our final topics. And then we will dive into actually writing new language, which will be presented to this board sooner than we realize. But it's, it's a lot of work, and Joe's here again, and it keeps chugging along, and it's a lot of work, but it's really getting to where it needs to go. For the Senior Commission, met earlier this week with them. As I reported last time, AARP and VITA are in the building helping with tax returns for those over sixty who are low to moderate income, and as long as they have a, kind of a simpler tax form. There are still some appointments available, so if you meet that criteria and are interested in getting some tax help this tax season, please reach out to the Senior Center. They're happy to help you there. And Director Corcoran also noted that she's in the process of working on the next fifty-three-ten grant, which they've used in the past to help secure some funding for some busing. They're hoping to, to do that again this time around. Energy Task Force, we've been talking about solar arrays, for those of you who have not heard. We obviously have had some changes since our meeting on Tuesday, so we'll report more on that when that information becomes available. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. With that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
There you go. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.